To be open the Washington Unified School District Regular Board of Education meeting for August 25th, 2016. Welcome everyone. If we can have our new student representative lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Announcements of actions taken in closed session. Item E1, Government Code Section 54957.6, Conference with Labor Negotiator, WTA/CSA Management. Conference with labor negotiators, we are currently in mediation while we are here conducting our regular board meeting. Government Code Section 54957, Public Employees Superintendent, information was given. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Student Association.
Hang on a second, Alicia, I just want to make sure we made that clear that the WSD and WTA are currently meeting and in mediation right now at this very minute. I think the way it was said, I'm not sure if everybody understood.
We are currently.
We are currently meeting. Both sides are meeting today, right now.
Thank you. Our first, welcome to our student board member, Vik Ram. We're anxious to hear your report.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. It's an honor to be here. First, I want to start with Southport Elementary. So, Southport Teachers, Staff, and PTO hosted a Welcome Back to School BBQ on Monday, August 15th, for parents and students. Kids enjoyed music, activities, a bounce house, and meeting their new teachers. Southport was very happy with the turnout and enjoyed seeing our families back at school. On the first day of school, our wonderful PTO hosted a boo-hoo breakfast for parents in the library after they dropped off their child at school. Parents made connections with other parents and enjoyed breakfast and coffee together. Wednesday, August 24th, Kevin Bracy kicked off our new year with an inspirational talk during our staff meeting. We always enjoy having Kevin at Southport, and we're looking forward to our 6th, 7th, and 8th grade dance that he will be hosting in September. Our after-school Spanish program begins on Monday, August 29th, and we currently have over 40 students enrolled in the program, and there's a waiting list as well. Our volunteer art program has begun, and students are enjoying the lessons led by parents, grandparents, and other community members. Now for River City, we have had a great opening week at RCHS, and we hope to continue having success the rest of the year. Thanks to everyone who came out for RC's Back to School Night, it seemed like a record turnout. This week, we also had club days in the quad, and we hope all our students find the club they are looking for. River City would also like to recognize individuals who have made the transition into the new school year as smooth as possible. Ms. Marlena Schroeder has had her Link Crew program, which helps ease incoming freshman fears about their new life at high school. There's also Ms. Sarah Johnson, who is in charge of the leadership program at River City and is doing a marvelous job preparing for the school's homecoming weekend. We kick off the 2016-2017 sports calendar this week with a football game visiting Liberty Ranch this Friday, and our ladies tennis team will be hosting Christian Brothers on Friday as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You're welcome. WTA report, who's here on their behalf this evening? Oh, Dawn.
Just as an FYI, there is no mediation going on. So, a major stumbling block at the bargaining table has been salary. Here's the short version. Over the last two years, the district's budget has increased over 20%. WTA's salary offer is 7%. Given this, our salary proposal is reasonable, and WSD can afford it, especially since we are so far behind neighboring districts. I want to spend some time going over something that was in a recent bargaining update from the district. It said, "From the onset, we have presented our best possible offers choosing not to engage in the all-too-traditional form of back-and-forth negotiating, prolonging the process and leaving both sides in a state of uneasiness." So, choosing not to engage in the all-too-traditional form of back-and-forth negotiation. Negotiation is the process of presenting proposals back and forth between parties, eventually coming to an agreement. There is no traditional versus other types of negotiations. Back-and-forth is negotiations. What this statement says is that the district never intended to bargain in good faith. Other part of the sentence says, "Prolonging the process and leaving both sides in a state of uneasiness." Well, here we are 10 months after bargaining started with no end in sight. So, I'll leave you to judge whether that prolonged the process or not. Also, the last part of the sentence on uneasiness, the fact that you feel the need to have a police presence anytime there's a public meeting tells me that perhaps you are feeling a state of uneasiness. I don't know what alternative reality the person or persons who wrote this update lives in, but clearly, the district's bargaining strategy has been an abject failure. In any case, even though the update was unsigned, it was posted on the district website with district letterhead. Since you are the trustees of the district, that means you own the update. It's yours. The superintendent has been here now for a little over a year. In what started with a positive communication and hope has turned into anger and mistrust. And we've had a 15% staff turnover in this year. If that's the district's goal, then you succeeded admirably. Regardless of what happens from this point on, it's going to be hard to regain that trust. Again, you are the trustees, and you own it. There are many good things going on in this district. We have great kids. Everybody who teaches here knows that. We have great staff, though missing a number of really good veteran teachers who decided to leave. There's dual immersion, farm-to-fork, MESA, robotics, and on and on. I would hate to see all of that go to waste. But at this time, today, it all seems to be going down to the toilet. And if that happens, I blame you guys.
Is there anyone here to give a report?
President Cruz, Superintendent Luna. Tonight, I would just like to, because we all live in the same air, and so I just want to make this quick and simple. CSEA would just like, we'll just, we'll be looking forward to working with the Special Services Department at the district office under the issue of the IEPs for transportation. Bus drivers and bus attendants don't know any about the pertinent issues that students have on the ones that we're transporting. And we're not asking for, you know, all the big, you know, the personal, personal stuff that's covered under the HIPAA law. We're just, we're just concerned about specific details that is, for the specific students that are on our buses, like seizures and those kinds of things, because we're, none of the bus drivers or our bus attendants know any of this information on our students. And so, it's a surprise to us as we go on through the school year, you know, about seizures and things like this. We have no idea. And it's a, it's a safety issue for not only our students, but, but our staff also. So, we'd be really like to resolve that issue. I've been working on it myself since February on trying to get it fast-tracked so that bus drivers and bus attendants are kept up on the students on the routes. Thank you.
I have a public, we're to public comments. I have Monty McCras.
McCray.
I'm sorry? McCray?
I'm here to speak to the school board today. I'm representing the Kiwanis Club in West Sacramento. My wife is the acting president. I will be the president of the club come October. We are a service organization, as a lot of you know. We used to have a summer camp for kids. For 35 years, we'd take 50 kids to camp. We got, we got to the age we couldn't do it anymore, you know? I'm 68, I'm one of the young guys in the club. And so, we turned our goal towards the children. Yeah, that's always been our, our goal, is the children of the community. So, you know, we, we give scholarships to the schools, to the high school. I can't remember exactly how many we give out every year, but we give a couple few thousand-dollar ones out, some $500 ones. You know, they're not huge, but something to help the kids. We also give grants for foster kids. We try to help foster kids. This year, it was a 100-year anniversary. We donated 100 backpacks loaded with all school supplies to the, to the grammar schools. We have donated blankets and clothes and such to the social workers at the schools. We are not, you know, a club that, you know, we're out there, hey, look at us and everything, but we are interested in having community recognition so that people do know what we do. We also had a program Kiwanis was sponsoring, the reading rooms. You would select schools that you wanted. Now, our club, we were going to concentrate in the Broderick area because that seems to be the poorest schools in the area. And we were going to set up a reading room that all the students in that school could participate in. I tried and tried and tried to get ahold of somebody through the school district. I left message after message after message. Oh, yeah, you know, well, we'll put you on, we're here, we'll give you their, their, their message machine. I'd leave message, it never gets nothing. So, finally, I physically run the person down. I explained to them what our program was, that we were here to support the children, we wanted to do this reading room, possibly more than one, you know, if, if we could afford it. We are a small club. This person, and I won't name any names who it was, but this person was just so excited about it, and this and that, and everything else, and how wonderful it was that we would do this for the children, and so on and so forth. To date, I've never heard back from the person. That was, I think, in February. Anytime we try to do anything through the, through the school district, we just don't seem to have any communication and stuff. When we were doing our, when we were doing our, our summer camp, like I say, every year we would take 50 children, 25 boys, 25 girls, underprivileged children, to Donner Mine Camp up at, up in the Sierra Nevadas. They were there for a week, we paid every penny of the expense, all they had to do was bring their clothes. Well, like I say, we got too old to do that. But, when we were doing that, we would take literature to the schools and everything and, and to, you know, drop it off in the offices and everything, you know, letting the community know about this camp that we were sponsoring. We talked to the teachers, nobody ever told us about it. We never saw it, it was never posted or anything.
Mr. McCray?
Yes?
I would love to continue to talk with you. On our board meetings, we have a three-minute minimum. If you have a business card, I think all of us-
Well, I'll just make one more point.
All of us on the board would like to have it, so you, we have your contact information.
Well, you have my contact information on that piece of paper there.
Do you have a business card by chance?
No, I don't.
Okay.
But, the, one last thing. We would like to try to find somebody who maybe is a go-between that we can be in direct communication with, you know, so that some of the things we, we want to accomplish, somebody told us we're not doing it the right way. So, we want to know what the right way is. We would like somebody that would be a responsible party that we could contact, and possibly get a little recognition in the community for the things we do. You know, we don't want a bell rung all over the place, but a little thing in the paper once in a while, you know, the Kiwanis Club did this, this, this for the school district of kids, it'd be nice.
Okay.
That's what I got to say.
If you, sir, Linda, can you give his information? Thank you very much. And please do not, I know we have this information. If you have any more information, please see the folks over here, because we would love to talk to you in here. And I apologize if no one has returned your calls. I do apologize. And I did neglect to read our little blurb, so I know you went over the three minutes, but I did not read that blurb. So, I will read it at this time about our public comments. Members of the public may address the board on topics that are under the jurisdiction of the board and are not on the agenda, although the board by law may not take action at this meeting. Education Code 3514535. The board may limit the total time for public input on any topic to 20 minutes unless it chooses to waive the time limit for a particular item. Individual speakers may be limited to three minutes to comment on any topic. Public comments consisting of individual charges, complaints, or derogatory remarks about any district employee are requested to be submitted in writing to the administration in accordance with the district complaint procedure. We do recognize that for a lot of people, commenting before the board and the audience and the people watching at home on television is a nerve-wracking experience. So, to try to make that as easy as possible, we do ask that there not be any applause or booing or catcalling or other demonstrations to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. We would like to hear from as many people as possible this evening. We do ask that you're respectful and courteous, as we intend to be the same to you. Please do not interrupt the speaker, and we hope to hear all of your professional comments, and we welcome all of you. So, with that, we are going to start with, and sometimes I can't read your, your writing, so please forgive me if I misstate your name. Janice, is it Villanueva? Janice?
Hello to the Washington Unified School District School Board. My name is Janice Villanueva, and I am a mother of 8th, 7th, and a 3rd grader at Bridgeway Island Elementary. I have lived in West Sacramento community for the past 15 years, and I too have loved on the children of West Sacramento for 11 years as the owner and teacher of Mile Pre-School. Tonight, I would just like to speak from my heart. Obviously, negotiations of contracts, numbers, and salaries are all very significant details during this time, but I just want to address the heart of the Washington Unified School District teachers. Within my 21 years of being a teacher for several different school districts, it is here in Washington Unified School District that you have teachers that genuinely love and care for these children. These teachers are the first to give back to the community in regards to outreaches, tragedies, and triumphs. These teachers give up extra time to build relationships with each parent who is willing to reciprocate the efforts. These teachers thrive on building up these children, plus they support solid foundations that stem from early childhood education. These are some general examples, I am sure that you have heard often about the teachers, but here are specific testimonies of genuine love. A 4-year teacher believed in my son, so she spent extra time getting to know him. She guided him and had him involved in programs that fostered his inner confidence. Due to this belief, he became a child who could not be defeated during his middle school year. Another example is a teacher who became a safe haven during a community tragedy. She became that go-to person for this particular little girl. Within the same tragedies, teachers gave up their time, money, and energy to provide comfort and relief. When we grieve, they grieve with us. And upon their compassion towards other, I have seen these teachers provide meals and financial support towards members of the community. I have seen these teachers at soccer, basketball, and musical events just to see their students. I have seen these teachers give back to West Sacramento despite their choice of teaching in the lowest-paying district. I have seen my son, who wanted to buy diamonds for his teacher. Without the love and compassion that these teachers have for these children, relationships such as, such as these cannot be fostered and found. So, as an educator and a mother, I'm kindly informing you that the district has money. Invest in these teachers. Invest in the future. Invest in people. Invest in those who love and give back. Settle now, please.
Lilia?
Hi, good evening. I am a mother of four boys who have, two who have graduated and have gone on to the military and to UC, UCLA. I am here because these teachers have been very supportive. They have given of their time. I am in awe of the fact that nothing has been settled. I don't want to go another year with my kids in the Washington district just not having a settled plan with their teachers. They see the worry, I see the worry. These teachers are great people. They just want to be respected and be acknowledged for all the time, and we need to support them. I know you guys may be on the outside or the inside looking out, but I am saddened, I mean, I am so emotional right now because I cannot believe that something has not settled. I can't. My kids are in awe because they don't understand why adults can't settle. Thank you.
Daisy, is it Pui? Poi? Thank you.
My name is Daisy Poi, and I'm here with two of my three children. Vincent, who is in 8th grade this year, and Ofa, who is in 6th grade. About 11 years ago, I found out I was pregnant with my third child. I was in the Bay Area, and my husband and I knew we had to relocate because of the housing costs, and the community we lived in was not fit to raise a family. So, after searching beyond San Jose and North Bay and through the cities off Highway 80, we came across a city that was new to us, West Sacramento. Not north, not east, and not south, but West Sacramento. Brand-new schools, brand-new community, everything was a convenience to us to start a new family. However, after the move, it was difficult to find a job, so I commuted from West Sac to San Francisco for five years. I left at 5:30 in the morning and returned at 8:00 PM, just to turn around and make the same commute. I had a choice to relocate my family back to the Bay Area, but I fell in love with West Sacramento, and I felt it was the perfect community to raise my family. So, we stayed. And like any other full-time employee in this room, we know that the people that spend the most time with our children are our teachers. How great it is to be a teacher, because I would give anything to spend as much time as they do with my kids. And for those five years I was gone, before the sun went up and when the sun came down, I trusted West Sacramento Daycares, Neighbors, awesome community, but these awesome teachers. I left my kids in their care. You see, that's what family's all about. We're not a community of families here in West Sacramento. We are a family and a community, this community right here. Our teachers could have chosen anywhere else, but they chose West Sacramento. And we know, like any employer, it's hard to find genuinely dedicated, compassionate, and trustworthy employees. Ones who go above and beyond their call of duty, ones that carve out a special place, that take away from their own time with their families to do what their job is to teach other people's children. And these teachers have not only taught my kids education, they have taught and instilled life lessons. They have taught and instilled social development, something that our society lacks a lot of in our children. They have molded and prepared our children to face the bigger problems we face every day today, the bigger problems outside these doors, the homeless population, the natural and terrorist attacks that have occupied a lot of our social media, not to mention the crime rate in Sacramento and the issues between our black communities and law enforcement across the nation, the list goes on and on. But one thing we know for certain is that we live for our children and their success. We will always stand up and defend what we feel is best for them regardless of the circumstances. I am truly forever grateful and in debt, just humble and confident that these teachers I stand up for you. In this room, I have done far more for my family, and there's absolutely no price to label the work they do for us. What we see in our children every day is proof that something great awaits from them. From 8:00 AM to 2:30 PM, money through Friday, and they leave the rest for us. These teachers carry and pull a lot of weight in this family. We often use the term, money can't buy love, sometimes described in a relationship. This is exactly a relationship, a relationship between parents and teachers, a bond so strong, so trusting, that like any other couple, family is priceless. Money will come and go even beyond our days, but nothing is more rewarding to a parent and a teacher than to see our kids succeed, not just my kids, but their, their kids too. We are here as one team and one very big and happy family, and I respectfully ask for your consideration of the negotiations that were made before you by our Washington Teachers Association. I support this family here in this room right now, who have been involved in our lives these last nine years, because I am nothing without my children, and my children are nothing without them. Thank you for your time.
This is Dylan. He died a month and two days ago. The last time I addressed the board, he came with me. And sadly, this is how I spent time with him. I had to give up my evenings to ask for something we shouldn't have to ask for, respect and fair compensation. When Dylan came with me, do you know what he saw? He saw all but normal walkout on us. He saw us disrespected. We're not asking for huge wages. In many surrounding districts, I would make $8,000 to $10,000 more a year. In other words, I'm paying $8,000 to $10,000 a year to work here, and I'm happy to. I love these kids. But please consider what you're doing. Think about the adversarial relationship you are creating that is not necessary. When I see you, I want to smile and be glad to see you and to be proud of my district completely. It is now with mixed emotion that I speak to you, that I can counter you at my son's memorial, that we see each other at Back to School Night. Can we please respect each other and work together for the best possible education for our children? Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. I am an attorney, a mother, and a member of this West Sacramento community, which I find to be absolutely beautiful. It's a big town, but everybody is very close, and we care about each other. And I've had many opportunities to move to other communities, and I've chosen to stay here. My greatest joy is my son Joshua, who is seven years old. He's in second grade. I didn't think I would get this emotional, but he is a wonderful student, and I attribute that to the wonderful teachers that he has had in the last couple of years. I think it is so unfair that these teachers are not treated the same as the teachers in neighboring communities. For them to have to give up more of their money to work here is amazing, and it's not fair. They not only are taking less money to work here in their community, but they're paying out-of-pocket a lot of money that they don't get reimbursed. Parents are generous donators to the school, but it's not enough. It's just not fair. They're not asking for an unreasonable amount of money. It's very reasonable. And the negotiations, from what I've heard so far, don't seem to be very reasonable themselves. They need to be given respect. I feel for these women that have come up here and poured their hearts out to you. I'm a fairly newer mother, and I'm not as involved in the school district yet, but I plan to be my entire life. I plan to stay here as long as it takes, but I am afraid, because I've got to tell you, by the time he gets to high school, I don't know if I'm going to stay here. I am very concerned about that. I would love nothing more than to spend the rest of my life here and to have our children get what they deserve, to have them be invested in, because they are our future. They deserve it. And my son would like to say one thing.
Our teachers are cool.
Thank you for your time.
Hi. I'm Alicia Lopez. I am class of 2016. I just wanted to say that, you know, you may be behind your desk and, you know, in your office. You're not at school with these teachers. You know, you don't see what we see every day. A lot of these teachers in this room are my best friends. I had problems last night at 1:00 in the morning, and I texted Ms. Weatherly, and she responded. She responded right away. Mrs. Woods, I had a gig at a small, little, home-and-while coffee shop, and I was so nervous about it. And she showed up with her kids and sat right in front. It made me feel secure and made me know that she was there to support me. She didn't have to do that. She took time out of her way that night, on that Saturday night, to just come and make sure that I was okay. Timothy O'Donnell, he's my 12th-grade English teacher. He taught me so much, more than just English. He has a map in his room that's upside down. And whenever anybody goes in there and asks, "Why is your map upside down?" He goes, "It's not upside down." And he explained to us more than just school. He teaches us about life, and he teaches us, you know, about racial profiling, and he teaches us about how to make job applications and how to create resumes. These teachers are so incredibly amazing. I trust them with everything. I trust them more than, you know, I would my mom. I mean, you know, my mom's my best friend too, but, you know. She has the right to take away my phone and car and stuff. They don't. But I, you know, when I'm not at school and I'm not working, I try to make it out just to come visit them, you know, and I'll text them and say, like, "Are you hungry? Like, do you want Taco Bell or something?" Like, I texted Ms. Weatherly asking what she wanted from Starbucks. Like, we're a family. And they don't have enough credit. I tell them all the time how much I care for them, and I would want nothing more than for them to get the appreciation they deserve. Thank you.
Good evening. I never thought five people can have so much power. But that's good, because we need your help. So this is just a reminder that these people are the ones you have left your children with. You will leave your children with, and/or you already are letting your kids learn from them. Right? How many hours at school?
Six.
Six hours with the teachers. They are the second parents of our children. Now, these are not going to be true if you are not sending your school to the school board that you all represent. This is very important to the rest of us. Please settle with them. These are just not our children. These are you guys' children as well. Thank you.
I want to thank everybody that came out this evening, and we appreciate all the comments. We do want to let you know that our email is out there. Any of you can email us. I know many of us will come out and have coffee with you, so please, we appreciate the comments. We appreciate you coming here. We know it's late. All the support that the teachers have, our community shows it, so thank you very much. We are going on to our information items. L1, the call for nominations for CSBA Director-at-Large, Asian Pacific Islander, and Hispanic. Linda Luna, Superintendent?
Thank you, President Cruz, Board of Trustees. At this time, California School Boards Association is announcing two vacancies in the state. These are two Director-at-Large positions that represent, one, Asian Pacific Islander, or two, Hispanic. In the board packet, we have included the application process and the timeline that goes with it, should any of the trustees would like to fall under those two open vacancies for California School Boards Association.
Do we need to nominate this evening, so we can move forward?
No, there's actually no action needing to be taken, but it is on the agenda for the public to know about. And should any trustees be interested in applying for this particular position in the state level, I'm certainly happy to assist in getting the paperwork together and working with CSBA to make sure the paperwork is complete.
I don't know if there's any comment or questions, but when I saw this information item, immediately I thought of our board member, Norma Alcala. I know she represents our Latino Hispanic population up and down California and even out of California. So I would suggest if Ms. Alcala is interested, that talk with Linda, if there's any more comments or questions or anybody else interested.
I would echo that. I think Norma does an excellent job representing the Hispanic community, so I would totally agree that you'd be the appropriate person.
So, Norma and Superintendent Luna, I'm not sure-
Maybe we'll talk.
You'll talk.
If you have time.
If you have time. Thank you for bringing that to us. Item L2, the Capital Investment Program, CIP, in relation to the allocation of funds and for the Measure V bond. Kevin Sanders, Director of Facilities Construction.
Thank you, President Cruz, Board Members, Cabinet, and Ms. Luna. What I have is, based on our last conversations and discussion, I'd like to kind of go through with you our current outlay and bring you up to speed where we are on the bond. So as we met last time, we talked about our capital improvement program and where things are moving forward, where the needs were broke out for the school sites. As you see in this slide here, it projects the needs for each school site as they are allocated. The primary focus, as you can see, is the Shell, interior, electrical, FFNE, other building construction, and site work. So this is kind of a recap of what we talked about last time we met. What you asked me for this time was an indication of what each of those individual items headings are. So if you look, for example, under Shell, these list a breakout of what those categories are as they are reflected on the bond. I believe you should have these in front of you as well. Okay. If you go to the next slide, what we have here is, I went out and met with each of the site principals to see what they felt their sites needed would be best suited for them and their staff and students. And I put those into a projection on the slides, so you can see where they fall, where they, we feel that those needs need to be allocated as funds and where the sites fall. As you can see with the side-by-side comparisons, we are almost in line on every avenue on these on the board. Any questions on these?
Any questions, comments? Member Kirby Gonzalez?
So to clarify, the district and site administrator project priority list is mirroring the CIP, or are those separate?
It is mirroring the CIP. There, what you have in front of you is mirrors the CIP, and the main four categories then are dry, warm, safe, and secure. So we're going right down the CIP, yes.
So are there any additional things that they were asking, or is everything from a school site, something that would already be an item that's listed?
There are additional things that were requested outside of the original list, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
For Member Pazadi, do you have any questions? Anyone else?
So Kevin, just to be clear, these two go together?
They go side-by-side, yes.
Is there anything specific you're looking for us for tonight, Kevin?
Looking for some direction on where we're going to go with the program. Just want to make sure that we, as things are outlined, that we kind of move forward. We originally talked about Bright Phase Two being the CIP and following through with that, recommendations for district-wide roofing upgrades at all the sites. We still would like to have a response on that. So we have the fire alarm, we have roofing, and we have dry rot in Bright. Those are the main focuses of what we're looking to proceed with the bond and the CIP program.
Comments, questions, directions? I like his idea.
Are there still, so roofing upgrades district-wide, I know a lot of roofing projects have been done. How many sites do you see that as a high need?
Matter of fact, I actually brought that with me. There are a total of roughly, I think, seven to eight sites, yeah, seven to eight sites that are still incomplete in their art, some of the other sites, a few individualized roofs that need to be taken care of as well.
And how bad are the roofs at this point?
They are dilapidating. You can see the dry rot there in the center photo. My recommendation is you take care of the outside interior and then work your way down into the interior. You're looking at 25, 30-year-old roofs that are obviously major leaks, which are big concerns.
That would be my recommendation for any sort of direction, and my personal perspective is that you take care of the roofs and work your way down.
I agree, especially with the inclement weather that's coming on.
The dry rot you talk about?
Yes.
My concern is with dry rot, sometimes you have mold. What is...
There is sometimes associated with that, and we would take the appropriate cautions and move forward with that and the appropriate measures as well.
So the recommendation is all four on the last page, so are you looking for us to give the okay to this direction of these four, or to give you the priority of which one?
I'm looking for the okay to move forward with these four.
Okay, with the roof being a big priority.
With the roof, roof, fire alarm, the ADA upgrades, which are obviously the site failures and things like that that you've seen, yes, in Bright Phase Two.
Are these all four, can they be tackled simultaneously, or is there a priority given to one over the other over the other?
It depends on the site, the function, the needs. We would work with the principals to make sure that we can get in there. Some of it would occur over holidays, vacations, things like that, depending on the site needs.
Do you have questions, comment, Norma?
I was just saying, it's all Measure V money, so...
That's correct.
Right. So how are we on schedule with the recommendations on the last page?
We would be, if we were to proceed with this, we're roughly right now, it puts us about two months behind because of the time we've taken to kind of go through the process and bring us back to where we are.
Any more comments, questions?
I think it looks like the district recommendations and priorities, I think the whole board's good with.
Appreciate your direction. Thank you. We'll move forward.
Thank you.
We are on the consent agenda item. Before I have a motion, I need to amend the consent agenda item. I need to table item M3, tabling the TOSA position and the counselor position. And item M14 and M15, we are tabling at this time also. Is there any more modification requests? With that, with tabling those four items, if I can have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are to board and superintendent comments. Board Member Alcala?
No comments.
Board Member Viegas?
No comments.
Board Member Pazadi?
Yeah, I just had a few comments. I want to thank Don Stoffer for coming and letting us know that the mediation for tonight has ended. I'm disappointed that no agreement was reached. I was very hopeful that tonight we would have something. We still have no word as to what happened, so I want to hear that. I'm hopeful that maybe we can continue with some discussions, but I was really looking forward to having something done tonight, so.
Board Member Kirby Gonzalez?
I'll echo the statements that were made earlier. Thank you all for coming out and for sharing your stories, your heart with us for teaching. And I had a lot of site visits, a lot of things, but I'll just end it with my own daughter, who came home and gave me every single detail of kindergarten and said, "Mommy, I love my teacher, and mommy, the president is our principal." So she thinks that, she's a little confused about president versus principal role, but I love that she thinks that women can be in that role. But we've just had some beautiful conversations at home, and I know that they're happening all over West Sacramento. And I know that right now, these are words to you, but they're true, and thank you very much for all that you do.
Yes, I want to echo what the board members that spoke tonight did say. I mean, I think we're all positive. We want the same thing, and I do want agreement just like everybody else. I attended with some of the other board members back-to-school night at River City last night. The teachers were awesome. The students were awesome. I was so impressed with those clubs out there. I do want to give a shout-out to some of the new clubs I saw, the Islamic Union, the Black Union. I'm just so impressed walking through that campus. I stopped in Ms. Yussefie's class, didn't understand a word she said. She is an awesome teacher, as well as a lot of you that come. My son has gone through- My son has gone through the elementary schools here and the high schools, and he has loved every one of his teachers, and I echo some of these parents. You're just not teachers. You teach them life lessons. And sometimes, as one of our students says, they like you more than our parents, their parents. So thank you for coming out again, and your words are not on deaf ears. We are going to the Board Governance, O1, Second Read and Approval of Series 0000, Community Relations Board Policies and Administrative Regulations.
President Cruz and Board of Trustees, we're in our final read of Series 0000. In your packet are the two revisions made from the last meeting, and I think we're ready for final approval.
Any comments, questions? Board Member Pazadi?
No. Sarah and I both went over these for over an hour and change with Superintendent Luna. And I think what came out of that was a good product that reflects the board's feelings, and I think it's ready to go.
Yeah, I think we had very few revisions. I'll thank Board Member Pazadi and Kirby Gonzalez for doing all the hard work and going over those. As I said before, a lot of these policies and admins have not been looked at for many years, so thank you to both of you for doing that. And do I need to motion to approve the Second Read?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have future board agenda items. Before I go on to that, I received emails from some of you on dates for our retreat in September. You guys have dates for me that would work? I know I have September 10th and September 11th on the table.
I can't September 10th. September 11th, maybe.
Do you have the 11th?
Yours was the 11th.
I think it was the 11th.
9th is my birthday, so I have that weekend. If you want to throw me a party...
So we're looking at September 11th?
Yeah. President Cruz, I'm going to be out of town the entire weekend, September 9th to the
Is there any other sad weekend in the September?
And I believe Trustee Alcala, you're going to be at the Latino California School Boards Association.
Right.
When?
That's the dates here. Just got my package tonight. It's going to be September 8th or September 11th.
About the last Saturday in September.
President Cruz, I'm going to be with AXA Women's Leadership that weekend.
September 8th? September 8th?
In honor parade.
Is it September?
September 8th.
18.
Or 18. Not the 17th and 18th, I can't.
Norma's not here.
No.
Are we looking at October?
No.
No.
September?
September 17th.
What day is that?
I can't. Saturday.
I'm trying to book all days, 17th and 18th, I'm out.
Do Friday? People probably can't...
Labor Day weekend? Can we do anything then? No, sorry.
Friday evening?
I can do Friday evenings, just not September 9th.
What's the last Friday in September? September 30th?
It's good for me.
Yeah.
We can... Let's poll the board and make sure that everybody goes home. Check your calendars. I believe that I am at the AXA Leadership that weekend, the 28th through the 30th.
23rd looks good for me, I think.
What's the...
23rd's a Friday.
September 23rd?
Anyone?
It's a Friday.
Anyone?
That looks good.
Yeah. 23rd, yes.
Superintendent?
Got it.
September 23rd?
Yes.
Did we want to talk about starting at 3:00 in the afternoon?
Earlier would be better for me.
Noon?
Earliest we can.
Yeah.
Noon?
Fine.
September 30th at noon.
30th, 23rd.
23rd. 23rd.
September 23rd at noon.
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Future board agenda items. A board policy and administrative regulation, Series 1000, we're going to do in September. Item P2, District Homework Policies and Philosophies in September. Promotion and Graduation Policies in September. Is there any other future board agenda items?
No.
Nope? Well, again, I'd like to thank everybody, and I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 We've got to go to...
Cruz?
Yeah, I'm over it.
If I may request that we adjourn this open session but move to closed session, please?
Yeah, let's do it.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
The request is that we move to closed session, return back to closed session.
Yes, we will be journeying back into closed session.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.